Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 24, 2018, will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dorchevitz is excused. Clerk Vorva, here. Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Officer Caitlin Nicely, who is our newest patrol officer. If you could come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Welcome aboard again to Plymouth Township. We also, you may notice, we have a lot of police officers here tonight, and that's a good thing. They're here, along with us, to welcome back Police Chief Tom Tidrington. Tom, welcome back, sir. No speeches or anything? Okay. All right. Moving on, let's do the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for the Tuesday 24th meeting, 2018.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is Item D, approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions on that?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
Problem regarding last week's minutes. Page three, number three, the vote on the solid waste fees. We have an ayes all, and I voted no.
Okay.
On the bills this week, we had a couple of fire department bills that were still going to Napa. So they were not huge, but again, we have an opportunity.
There are some things we cannot purchase at AutoZone that we have to continue shopping at Napa for.
Beautiful. And you'll notice a senior transportation charge from 2015 on the bills for $11,900. We had no backup from the prior treasurer. Plant Moran brought it to our attention that we never paid this bill. So that was something that is in the bills for this period. So an $11,900 charge from 2015.
Who is the payee?
It goes to the, from us to the senior transportation, the senior group.
So it's a budget transfer?
Yes.
Cindy, do you want to comment on that?
At the end of 2015 is when the transfer of the senior transportation department came over from the city to the township. And for the November and December 2015, the months of November and December of 2015, a billing was done on the old AS400 system that was billing the city of Plymouth and Plymouth Township for the senior transportation activity for November and December. In the course of transferring over to the BSNA system, that somehow never got transferred across in the new system, and therefore was never paid by the township. So it's been sitting on the senior transportation's books as a receivable since 2015, and we needed to get rid of it. So basically, we needed to pay for it, and we did participate in the services for November and December of 2015. So it's a legitimate charge. It was just never paid.
What does that do to the current year senior transportation budget?
Believe it or not, we're right where we need to be so far, so I did not need to make a budget adjustment for it through June 30, at least.
Okay. So several months ago, there was a discussion that we were falling way behind on senior transportation to cover our costs. Has that been cured?
No, it has not. Starting in the fall, I don't know how much.
September 1st.
September 1st. You want me to take that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Starting September 1st, we're implementing a fee schedule where we are actually going to charge for all the rides offered by the senior transportation service. We are then going to evaluate, once we get paid for all those rides, where we are cost-wise, if we have to increase or do something else next year. We're going to a ticket-based system. Everybody's going to pay. For the handicapped people, we're going to contract out to ABC Transport or Transportation, ABC. And then we're going to evaluate.
So we're going to have a discussion on this before we implement?
Yeah.
Is that right?
No.
No, we're not going to have a discussion. I'm talking about after the...
About what?
After you start ticketing all the people who've been running for free, is what you're saying?
Correct.
After we re-implement a fare program that had been discontinued by the previous administration.
We're going to evaluate.
Because we're losing money.
Right. So that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
So we're not changing the fare. We're just leaving what's intact.
Correct.
We're re-implementing what was done away with, and we're instituting a more accountable fee schedule so that we can track where the money's going.
But we didn't increase. It was just things were never charged in the last couple of years. So we're going to charge the fees as stated and see how that works.
That's the...
Good. Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Minister Clerk.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda for Tuesday, July 24, 2018.
Okay. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dempsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is public comments and questions, limited to three minutes per person. This is not your only opportunity during the evening to comment on agenda items. This is just sort of the first opportunity. There's also another opportunity at the end of the meeting, and we also encourage public comments and questions on each individual agenda item, as long as you stick to that particular topic at hand. So, are there any comments or questions at this time? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to Item F1. This is the Woods' cluster housing option. And Laura Haw is up in the Dorchevitz chair tonight because she's working the computer, and will also be leading the discussion on this particular item. You want to stay there, or do you want to walk around?
Yeah, I'm happy to walk around.
Well, you know what? Since you've got a lot of paperwork there, why don't you, why don't you stay, why don't you stay, yeah, stay seated, and then you can use your handheld microphone. Hold it close.
Thank you. Laura Haw, Planning Director, Plymouth Township. And the application before you this evening is for a final cluster housing agreement and final development plan approval. This project is something that the Planning Commission and this Board of Trustees has reviewed before, when it was presented as an option plan. The site is five acres, heavily wooded, on Ann Arbor Road, directly north of the Pioneer Middle School. And previously in 2017, the applicant, Jeff O'Brien, and Walt Menard, came before you with a cluster housing option to develop the site into nine different units, detach single-family custom-built homes. As part of this project, and the reason for doing the cluster housing option really stemmed from the preservation of over one acre of open space on the site by clustering the homes and having those reduce setbacks. The Planning Commission reviewed the plans in the winter of 2017 and in the spring of 2018, and have recommended final approval contingent that the outstanding agency permits and any conditions in the planner and engineer's reports are addressed on the final stamp plans. So the resolution before you this evening, it should read here, "Move to approve Resolution 2018-072454 for the Woods' Cluster Housing Agreement, Final Development Approval." Contingent on the Planning Commission's condition that the final stamp plans will address all outstanding items as listed in the planners and engineers' reports, excluding any additional site lighting, and that all permits from outside approving agencies are issued. There are several that the applicant is working on securing, and they're just running its course. It should have no impact on the actual development proposal. If you have questions, I'm here to answer them, and the applicant is also in attendance. Should you have any additional questions for them?
Okay. Let's open it up to questions from the board.
This question is 20, page 21 of the covenants of the condominium. Mr. Menard probably will... I'm trying to understand, under O, solar panels? Last word says, in writing, by the developer. Is it the developer and the association, once the developer's gone? Or doesn't it matter?
Mr. Menard will need you to come up to answer that question. And then when you do, we need your name for the record as well. You've got to come up to the small microphone there.
Yes.
Oh, got it. All right. Solar panels. No solar panel may be installed on any unit until the type, design, and location has been approved in writing by the developer.
So, I'm Walt Menard, Menard Builders, 9385 Saddle Brook Court, Plymouth, Michigan. We have no intentions of putting solar panels on, but once the association takes over, I don't know if that's what you're looking for, after the developer...
That's what I'm talking about, for the future.
For the future. That would be up to the association, and then again, the approval by whatever authority is going to regulate those solar panels.
So does that mean you need to add the word "association," or it doesn't matter from a legal standpoint, 20 years from now?
It doesn't matter to us. I don't know if it matters.
No, but will it matter to the resident, who may want to install solar panels in 20 years, or 10 years? Maybe Laura, maybe you can help out with that?
I mean...
Or maybe our attorney.
Yeah, I would defer that to Township Attorney Kevin Bennett.
I'm sorry, I did not hear...
Because the bylaws state the word "developer," I think you're right, that should be changed to "association," because once the developer turns the project over to the association, the association's going to be in charge rather than the developer.
So it should be developer slash association?
Or just "association."
And the developer is the association.
Developer has control until such time.
Right now, the developer is the association.
Yeah.
And so they'll have to...
Right.
The developer is the association. They have total control, so you need both of them in there.
We can handle that.
That's noted.
Do we have to approve this again, Kevin? Does it have to come back here?
No. What was approved before was the option. This is to approve the entire project with the contingencies that Ms. Haw just stated. Now, if there's going to be an amendment to the bylaws, that should be referenced in the motion for the resolution.
Could either Ms. Haw or the developer talk about the landscaping of this, now that this is at this stage?
Sure. I'd be happy to. And then if there's anything you'd like to add, feel free. So, since this was developed under a cluster housing option, you know, there comes into the question, what is the greater benefit, and what is the trade-off for this development method? And in this case, under a cluster housing option, the developer could add additional units. But part of the rationale for this proposal was that by only having nine units on the site, a lower density, they're able to preserve more of the woodlands and the natural space, which they're preserving over an acre. They're also preserving a number of the mature trees on the site by using this development method, along the perimeter, along Ann Arbor Road, and in between the different building envelopes in the detention area. They're also proposing a sidewalk on Ann Arbor Road, an internal sidewalk network, and also a sidewalk extension to Litchfield Drive, so that there's that neighborhood connection. And they're also landscaping that pedestrian connection. Then they're also doing a site amenity for the residents in those units with the pergola and seating area underneath, and some landscaping around that. So they are investing considerably in this site and making it a quaint neighborhood, pocket neighborhood, if you will. They are also doing some tree replacement as part of their project.
Okay. Could you maybe get into that a little bit more detail? Tree replacement?
I believe that there's equivalent of 65 trees that need to be replaced, and as part of this development model, the applicant is looking to do a lot of that replacement onsite, where there's room available for it, and keeping with the wooded theme of the area. And this project is also called the Woods. So it'll be a quite nice atmosphere.
We hope so. And I know last week, there was a discussion about a payment-in-lieu option with regard to that. PUD, does this one have a payment-in-lieu arrangement or option?
It would certainly be an option if the developer requested it. If the replacement trees couldn't be handled onsite, then payment-in-lieu at that time would kick in, and that's something that Jeff and I have talked about. But otherwise, as far as the internal sidewalk network, you know, they're going above and beyond what's required, and the landscaping and the onsite amenity. So this is a good example of how a cluster housing option serves, you know, the immediate residents and then the larger community.
So if there is a payment-in-lieu, is that stated, or is that to be determined, the amount?
It would, based on the replacement, it would be about $13,000 if they couldn't accommodate the trees onsite at this point. Until we receive the final stamp plans with those permits, then we'll have a better idea. But I think it's the applicant's intent to provide those trees onsite.
Before construction begins, or during construction, could you guys mow the grass along the easement, along Ann Arbor Road?
We did in the easement part, and then when we were waiting for, we thought we would get our approvals from MDOT and Wayne County and so forth, so we could start doing our interior stuff. But, yeah, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, the grass is extremely long there right now.
Yes.
And weedy. So, okay.
Also, Walt, you know there's construction going on right near there on Import Team?
Our intent was to wait until that was out of the way, so that we don't add to the construction.
That was my, that was my question. Thank you.
One more suggestion on the grass that you're going to plant. Please consider low growth and low maintenance, in other words, low water use varieties. There are plenty that are available, many that even in this part of the country, you only have to mow four times a year. So it might be worth investigating for future maintenance costs, and, you know...
Sure, we can look at that.
Work, air pollution, whatever. So it's something to think about. Landscapers need to look 20 years out on total overall cost of landscaping, and the grass is an expensive one that most people don't think about.
They do look long-term. They look for that weekly maintenance fee.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right. Chuck, would you like to make the motion on this with that other caveat?
All right. I move to approve Resolution 2018-07-24-54 for the Woods' Cluster Housing Option, Final Approval. Contingent on the Planning Commission's condition that the final stamp plans will address all outstanding items as listed in the planners and engineers' reports, excluding any additional site lighting, and that all permits from all outside approving agencies are issued, and that, on page 21 of the covenants, item O, the word "association" be added after developer.
Before, asking for a second, I think there might be too little word changes that Ms. Haw proposed.
Correct. And my apologies for this. The first line in the resolution should read, "Move to approve Resolution XX for the Woods' Cluster Housing Agreement, Final Development Approval."
So, strike "option" and insert "agreement"?
Correct.
And then insert "development" after the word "final" on that line?
Correct. Thank you.
Yep. Let's do it.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Kermy, seconded by Trustee Dempsey. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Clerk, take the roll, please.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is Item F2, new modems for police vehicles. Lieutenant Kudra's here tonight to talk about that.
Yes, the Police Department is seeking authorization to utilize federal forfeiture funding to purchase 10 new modems for our fleet of patrol cars. These modems are manufactured by a company called Cradle Point. Reasons for the request of this expenditure, first, the modems that we are currently using are rather old. They were all installed in 2008, between October and December. Like a lot of the equipment in the patrol cars, they've been uninstalled and reinstalled, and the wiring has been cut, spliced several times. We run into frequent connectivity issues with these modems. It's often the case where we lose the signals, and then officers need to re-log into all the different computer programs that they're using throughout the course of their day. Additionally, I was actually contacted by Clemis. Clemis actually owns the modems that we have right now, and they contacted us and basically told us that they were outdated. They recommended these Cradle Point modems as replacements, and they actually advised they want their old modems back. So we're going to need to return those to them. Probably the biggest reason that we need to do this is the modems that we currently are running, they run on the 3G network, and in December of this year, Clemis is going to switch all of their programs over to a 4G network, so we will have no connectivity whatsoever with these current modems that we're using come December. Obviously, we need to have connectivity for the officers to do what they need to do. Several of the programs that they use in the car, well, all the programs, they need to have internet connectivity to be able to use them. Some of those are computer-driven dispatch, where we receive our runs. The cars have an in-car GPS mapping system, the law enforcement information network for checking warrants, and running names and things like that. Citations, reports, and in-car messaging, that is all utilizing internet connectivity through the modems. That is what we are asking for. The items are a state-bid item, so it's not something that we can shop around and get a better price for. The quote from Cradle Point came to $10,550.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes. The installation charge of $350, is that chargeable to the forfeiture fund budget? And if so, do we have to put it in this resolution to meet the requirements of the federal government?
The installation charge, I am told, is not something that we can put in with federal forfeiture funds. Our plan was to utilize our vehicle maintenance budget for that, and the quote ranged from $300 to $350, and that came right from my vehicle upfitter. And the reason for the range there is, over the years, we've utilized several upfitters to upfit the cars, and I have different cars that were built by different upfitters. The gentleman that I'm using, he's actually, he would have built four of the cars right now that he would be upfitting, so he's not sure how the other cars are put together. So that's why he gave us a price range.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Dan, if they're, if these are all outdated and decrepit and everything else, why does Clemis want them back?
Oakland County? I have, I do not know. All I know is I was told there are, and we want them back. I said, "I will hand-deliver them to you."
Okay. Any questions from the board or the public at this point? Very good. Pardon me? Jerry?
Nope, ready to...
You want to make a motion? Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve Resolution 2018-07-24-55, authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to purchase 10 Cradle Point CORIBR 900-600M wireless routers for an amount of up to $10,550 out of federal forfeiture funds.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, take the roll when you're ready.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Heisey?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. Item F3, our budget adjustments, our budget amendments, with Finance Director Kushner. And what we're going to do tonight, we have changed up the agenda somewhat on this issue. We will be removing any of the items dealing with the Drug Forfeiture Fund, because now that Chief Tidrington is back on the job, he is our resident expert on that, in that field, and he'd like to have a little bit more time to go over those requests. So Cindy, the floor is yours.
Laura, do you have, Laura, do you have the schedule, the new one?
Well, the new one's not going to be on there.
We have, we have new ones.
Yeah. So does all the, do all the board members have them? Okay.
So the new one, to be sure, says $306,000 at the bottom right, first page?
Yes.
Yes.
So as Supervisor Heisey noted, the difference between the schedule Jerry passed out to you earlier, and the one that was included in the board packet, is the fact that we took out all the amendments relating to the federal Drug Forfeiture Fund. So then what we have left is, if you look at the schedule, basically, we have an increase in expenditures over revenue of $78,986. And you have the detail that supports the line items on the schedule that Jerry passed out. And I've also passed out a summary of what has gone on with the budget for the last two quarters, to give you a little bit of better perspective, and then if you have some detailed questions, we can go through it. But if you look at that summary sheet, in the first quarter, we had additional, a net addition of $60,000 of expenses, expenditures, which reduce our projected revenue over expenditures by $60,543. In this quarter, then, we have an additional $78,986 of expenditures, which will further reduce our budgeted revenue over expenditures to a projected $172,000. And then to the left of that is showing the effect of that on the projected fund balance. The individual line items, we have descriptions to them. As I said, we have more expenditures than revenue. We did have some line items that were of savings, but when it all netted out, it's in... We did have some line items that were of savings, but when it all netted out, it's an additional $78,986 of expenditures. Would you like me to go through the detail, or do you just have questions?
Any questions at this time?
I don't necessarily know for all the detail, but perhaps you could discuss the first two items.
An overview?
Because there's a $49,000 decrease and a $4,500 increase in the balance.
Right. Okay, so the very first item relates to the new policy towards our human resource department, in effect contracting it out. So we signed a contract with ECTOHR for $7,000 a month, through the end of the year it'll be $49,000. But they're already here, at the same time our HR director is also here, so we're in effect not recouping any savings at this point. And then the HR director has, when she retires, a payout of her sick and vacation time, and when you factor that in, it's not enough to cover the $49,000 that we have in the contract through the end of the year. So the net of those two is about $44,000. The next item is the assessing line item. That is correcting a computational error we had in the original budget. We pay about $23,000 a year to WCA for assessing, and when I looked at the spreadsheet, it was that number times 11 and not 12. So that was just a computational error. So $23,000 relates to that. New also this year is the Metro Act review fees. The revenue actually comes into the general fund, so this year, we're going to charge the related expenses to the general fund. The next item is just, it's a significant item, which is why I put it on there, even though it has no effect on the fund balance. We used to do an operating transfer out of the general fund into the improvement revolving fund to pay the debt, and this year, we decided instead of doing the transfer, we're just going to pay it directly out of the general fund. But in the original budget that you passed, you passed a budget with an operating transfer out of $776,000. So this just reclassifies it. We purchased TV recording equipment to record the board meetings.
Did that come out of the PEG fees?
No, that is just being charged to the supervisor's budget.
Can it come out of the PEG fees?
We could look into that.
Pardon?
We could look into that.
Okay, how much more? Any other more questions, Jack?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have one. The next line, and several other lines. Why, under the expenditures column, does it say "Elected Officials for Police and Fire"?
Yep, that is the title that has just been given to that account in our system, and we're going to, in the coming year, change all of our account descriptions and numbers to the state chart of accounts, so we'll do it at that time. It's always been classified as elected officials.
It's just a mischaracterization.
It's just a name, yeah.
Because it's not elected officials incurring that charge.
Correct.
Okay. Mark, you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, sure. Any questions from the public on this? Okay, Mark, go for it.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-07-24-56 authorizing the township clerk to make the amendments to the general fund balance as enumerated above.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Clerk?
It captures this blind-out resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made by Treasurer Clinton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva, and Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Hightman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item F4. This is an approval of a stormwater easement for Orlacon. Dave Richman.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Actually, this is a water main easement. It was written there as stormwater, but in every instance, waterway.
Okay, it's water main, sorry.
The board is required to approve water and sewer easements for all projects in the township. This water main easement is for the Orlacon Medco Manufacturing Facility over on Concept Drive. They've just recently completed their construction. We have a public water main that is running around the back of the site for hydrants, so what this request is to approve the water main easement for that public water main.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Richmond? Anybody in the audience? All right, need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move the approval of Resolution 2018-07-24-57 authorizing approval of the water main easement for Orlacon in accordance with the attached drawings and further to authorize the township clerk, township attorney, and township engineer to sign the documents to be forwarded to Wayne County for recording.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hightman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Hightman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is item F5. Just, I'm going to read you the corrected memo. It reads as follows. "Trustee Dorchevitz, Consultant Paul Albanese, and Golf Course Committee Member Robert McCurdy and I, Heisey, have been drafting an RFP for the management of Hilltop Golf Course. Our current contract with Billy Casper Golf expires in March of next year. The RFP is about 90% complete at this point, and I would like to get it on the street sometime in August. I would appreciate your concurrence at our July 24 meeting." Pretty much speaks for itself. We've been working on it now for a couple months. Mr. Albanese and Mr. McCurdy owe me a couple exhibits dealing with golf course maintenance standards and operational standards, things that I don't know anything about, so I'm relying on them to give me their best advice on that. Bob Dorchevitz is also weighing in with some other detail as well, but I hope to have it done maybe sometime within the next two weeks. Basically, just the motion kind of speaks for itself. I'm just looking for your concurrence.
Just a question.
Yeah.
As per custom with these RFPs, it does say, as I recall, that the township reserves the right not to actually move forward with any proposal that's offered.
Right, we always can act in the best interests of the township, and we have the right to accept or, you know, we can accept or reject any bids that we want or continue on in the same course of action. Then certainly Billy Casper will have the ability to bid on this as well. And the selection process will definitely be involving the board because it's obviously a significant policy decision as well.
And this RFP is only for the maintenance of the golf course? The management of the course?
Management, yeah.
Is how we're saying that?
Yes, management.
So does that allow for some of the different things that Mr. Albanese can come up with? You know, restaurants or whatever the ideas are?
There is a provision in there. There are several provisions in the RFP dealing with the clubhouse.
Okay.
But we also reserve the right to walk that out if we want to. They could, somebody could submit a bid saying, "I can manage the golf course, but I can't manage a restaurant." We want to look at the, or the clubhouse. We want to look at the clubhouse as part of the agreement for now, but, you know, we always reserve the right to walk that out if we want to.
Thank you.
All right.
Does this leave enough room for someone to propose something totally creative that maybe none of us ever thought of, including Mr. Albanese? In other words, is it overly restricted, or does it have an option for something creative?
There is language in there, and I can expand on it a little bit more. There is language in there dealing with the, you know, the integration with the surrounding park facilities, if that's what you're getting at.
Well, also, I'm thinking, maybe there's some creative financial thing that, don't know. I'm not smart enough to anticipate.
Yeah.
Someone looks at it that may have totally out-of-the-box way of thinking that we may like.
Yeah. I think that there's sufficient language in there that does allow for creativity by the bidder, and that is something I know Mr. McCurdy was, you know, who's been in the golf course business, you know, has recommended, and I think that there's sufficient language. We can take another look at it, but I think there's enough flexibility in there for creativity.
In the clerk's office, there's about between 10 and 20 proposals from the last time, which was 2004.
I believe that's correct.
And then before that, I don't know if they still exist, which was about 1997. So who knows? But the clerk's office has a bunch in the archives. And the other final question is, where will you post this item for bid?
Well, it would be pursuant to our purchasing policy. It would be posted online on our website, and then it would also be distributed to individuals who we are aware of who are in the golf course business, but, you know, ultimately, even publishing in the newspaper of record really is not going to attract the clientele. We can look at, I'll talk to McCurdy and Albanese if there is some kind of a trade publication that we could put something in, at least focused on Michigan or maybe in the Midwest.
What about that Mitten site? Does that?
I don't know if Mitten really is appropriate for this. I think Mitten is more into, you know, basic governmental services. You know, if you want to buy a fire engine or a radio or something like that, this might be outside the scope of Mitten, but we can look at that, too. Okay, is there a motion on that?
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Hightman?
I move that the Board of Trustees concur in the recommendation of the supervisor to issue a request for proposals for the management of Hilltop Golf Course.
All right, motion's been made by Trustee Hightman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Dempsey. Let's just do a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks. Next up is item 6, comprehensive fee schedule changes to the water tap charge. Clerk Vorva?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. When we were looking at this last time, there were several questions concerning the overall fee schedule, and in light of, at the time, our director was gone on a bereavement leave. This is not an attempt to leave him out of that, but we were trying to correct an issue that we felt needed immediate attention, and that is just a singular tap fee issue in the comprehensive fee schedule resolution. In looking this over, we have discovered that it's been about 23, 24 years since this has last been updated, so the $750 charge that we're charging is almost 25 years old. And review of what has been going on in just the past year, you can see in the information that we've provided for you here on a chart, we have lost, you know, $7,000 or $8,000 just on about a half a dozen taps, and we felt that it was necessary to address this right away when you see that we had Mr. Menard, who has two developments going on, and then a couple more coming online, and that we needed to address this right away. In order to change from the way we do it now would require us to change the ordinance first and then change the fees. So we want to leave the ordinance the way it is right now, which is, we have a contractor that does the taps for us, as opposed to letting the contractors or builders, developers individually hire their own. I personally think that's the best way to do it, but right now, we're only interested in the fee that's being charged, and later, we can have a more general discussion on a policy that we may want to do, and that would require us changing the ordinance and then changing the fee schedule. So right now, we're just looking at changing the fee schedule, and you can see from the information that we are proposing here is for the three-quarter inch and one-inch service, you can see the current charges that we charge for the different distances you may have to go in order to tap the lines, and the proposals you can see are significantly higher, but they are there to cover the actual cost that we're being charged. And if you look at the schedule showing the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six addresses that we've done recently, you can see the, we're taking anywhere from, you know, $1,000 to $1,200 hit on each one. So the change for the 0 to 60-foot distance is 1775 for three-quarter and 1,900 for the one-inch, and then what we did was use the same formula for going up to each one of the other positions.
All right, this is a short-term countermeasure that needs to be put in place right away. You ready for a motion?
Yes.
Hold on, real quick. I get to do that. Sherri, are you comfortable with this? I mean, do you know how to administer this?
Oh, yeah. I'll give you the change. Right now, I can say it's a one-inch.
Yeah, probably.
Yes, right now, it's just a short-term fix until the board decides whether or not you want to change the ordinance and no longer be in the tapping business, and then there were other items that you thought to change in the ordinance as well, so that requires a whole different process. This can be changed tonight to fix the tap fee cost, and then that kind of like puts a plug in the bucket, so to speak, so that these developments that are coming in very quickly, we've got Andover Forest, Tuscany, and then Walt Menard's, rest of his project, they're all ready to start getting building permits. Walt Menard already has three that he's working on in the reserve, but the others are that close to getting ready to go. So this way, we are at least covering our costs, and the costs that have been decided here actually came from Patrick for the cost of materials, the cost of labor, and then we have DPW and Sons invoice that shows what he charges, and that's where these fees came up. So it strictly just covers our cost at this point in time.
Okay. And Patrick, you're okay with these numbers? They make sense to you? You're okay with it?
Honestly, I don't know, because I was just aware of this proposal tonight, so I did not look at it.
Okay, all right. But we understand that we've had some timing issues. For the attorney, is this motion a proper way to make these changes? Because we keep talking about ordinance revisions and fee changes, and this is sufficient to implement a fee change without an ordinance change?
Yes, this is not a change to the actual ordinance, it's a change to the fee schedule. The ordinance requires that a change to the fee schedule be done by resolution.
Okay. Mr. Kermy?
I move to approve Resolution 2018-7-24-58 authorizing the adoption of the proposed fees for the charter township of Plymouth Water and Sewer System Fee Schedule, and to make these new fees a part of the comprehensive fee schedule to become effective immediately.
Okay, motion's been made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hightman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Hightman?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. What we're going to do now is take about a five-minute break so that Hightman and Ms. Haw and I can go up there and give our little presentation. So we're going to break for about five minutes. Hey. All righty, we're back on the record here. It is item F7, Economic Development Update. We were going to stand up at the front, but it's easier for Laura to run the computer from there, and we got all dressed up for nothing, Gary, I guess, so they don't get to see our profile shots, so. Anyway, we are, we just want to give you guys an update on economic development projects and other economic development-related themes since we took office, since the new board took office in November of 2016. So this is basically a recap of all of last year going into this year. There's going to be, we're looking at a couple themes here tonight. One is new investment, significant reinvestment, so that would be a company or operation that is already in that is already in town, challenges. And that's going to be some of the, some of the projects that have fallen through over the years and some of the other properties and issues that we are continuing to deal with. Then followed up by what's coming next, sounds like a Jeopardy! show, right? And potpourri. And then we'll have question-and-answer session as well. This is a, this is a document that Laura put together, really well done. And we're, it's something that we're, we're kind of prototyping this tonight. So not, not, all the photos that you see are not necessarily the ones that'll be used in the final version. So I wanted to make that clear. But this is the kind of thing that we can use with the chamber when we do presentations to them, or we can certainly modify this fairly quickly in case we have a new business that's coming to town or wants to get a little bit more information about us. So I think that constitutes the welcome. We'll hand it off to Laura Haw for new investment.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Heisey. And before we get into this, I just want to say that there's a team of everyone who's behind economic development in the township. Supervisor Heisey, you've done a great job, and Gary, for stepping up as well in the, the economic development czar role that you've led us. But also to Sherry and Mark in the Building Department, Dave Richmond and Kevin Bennett, Patrick, the Fire Department helping us with access, the Police Department helping us with traffic counts and impacts, the Planning Commission being diligent and seeing, you know, over 100% increase in the amount of activity since January 1st, 2017. You know, I think, and Carol Martin, too, I have to give her a shout-out because we're really a team in this effort, and it's just really appreciated. And it's wonderful seeing the new investment and reinvestment in the community. And so in terms of new investment, since 2017, January 1st, there's been six new commercial industrial facilities. That totals over $36 million in construction value. And I just want to go through a couple of these major highlights. So the first is Polytech. They were the last greenfield vacant site within the Metro West Technology Park. We also have the Monroe Bank and Trust. You know, this is, this is our neighbor right outside. It's part of the Plymouth Town Center Plaza, right next to Grand Travis Pie Company on Ann Arbor Road. This is a site here that is in the works for a new bank facility. That's the, the front facade. It's consistent with the buildings that are out there today in the town center. And also, there's the site plan. And with, with a lot of nice landscaping, and the developers are great to work with. Another new investment is Adient. They did a facilities expansion they're working on right now. You can see there. That is a rendering of the front office and new welcome area. And as part of their project, they're really reducing that impervious surface and adding more of a campus natural feel.
And let me just say a few things about Adient. You know, we've, we've heard a lot in the news lately that they've, they've had a pretty bad, I think they had a pretty bad first quarter. It was so bad that they pulled out of their plans for corporate offices in downtown Detroit. So they are retaining their corporate operations here in Plymouth, and they are, I anticipate that they will be buying up or renting at least some other existing facilities in Plymouth Township in the, in the year ahead because they're, they're really having to retrench and regroup, and it's really focused around, around this building. So Adient is not leaving Plymouth, and if anything, we are the beneficiary of their unfortunate financial situation right now, but we're confident that they will recover.
They're going to move that to Plymouth Township?
I have not heard that, Gary.
That was the plan.
Yeah?
Again, it's all up in the air based on their financials from the last two quarters, but their plan was to consolidate into the, the facility off of Ridge Road.
And as, as I think we all know at the board here, the Adient also owns a substantial part of the DeHoco site, which is immediately north of this tech center. So we're keeping an eye on them. If they ever want to sell that property or if they want to expand into it, they may, they may decide to do that down the road.
And other new investment highlights is the Quickpass Car Wash that's coming on Ann Arbor Road just east of the 275 interchange. It's where the former Denny's is. So this is a redevelopment of a vacant site. And as part of the project, the applicant is including much more lush and green spaces to the site. And they are also closing two curb cuts onto Tavistock Circle, which is wonderful. And we really applaud them because that'll, that'll change the dynamic of, of that intersection. OrlaCon, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with, has been, you know, a major win for the township. About $50 million in investment, 70 new employees, a really high-tech R&amp;D facility. And then, so that is some commercial and industrial highlights, but we can't forget about the residential investment as well. So 20 new single-family units, but then another almost 50 residential units that'll be coming online as part of cluster housing options. And I'd like to point out that this does not include the development that's north of the picnic basket, the Andover Forest. Those 17 units are not included in this count. And the recently approved hillside residences for the, the former Courthouse Grill site, that PUD, those apartments are not included in these counts. So this is just strictly single-family detached.
And just for, when we use this in the future, that box is, that really fades out pretty bad.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit hard to read. We can, we can adjust that.
So what does that, what does that say for those of us who can't read it?
So these are some good housing stats that say the average sales price of homes has risen 6% to almost $330,000, that the average price per square foot has risen 10% to $161 per square foot, and that the average day, the average amount of days on the market has lowered 19% to just 29 days, which is phenomenal. And as someone who is looking and has made offers on housing in Plymouth Township, I know that they go very quickly, and it's a very competitive market out there.
Again, these numbers have just been since January of 2017.
And then in terms of significant reinvestment, these are maybe smaller-scale projects or existing businesses and facilities who are making significant improvements to their site. So there were 95 commercial and industrial upgrades or interior renovations and 42 reoccupancy permits that were issued since January 1st, 2017. And that's over $42 million of investment. And some highlights for this include St. Kenneth Parish. They're doing a building expansion there for their front entryway and atrium, parking lot improvements, and one of the nice, and nice features of this is, you know, they're really being a good neighbor, and they've added a lot of landscaping along their north and western property lines to just kind of beautify and soften those edges. Another example that I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with is 939 South Mill Street. This was before, there's almost not a lick of green space and grass on the site, mostly just pavement and outdated building. And this, this is the site today. They've added a lot of green space. They've improved the building facade, parking lot improvements, lighting. It looks.
It's fantastic. It's just a, just a beautiful building. And also Brigadier has also indicated that they are looking to significantly redevelop the, the land that, that surrounds their site, basically between Mill Street and the railroad tracks. Right now, it's pretty chewed up. It's gravelly, it's dirt. There's a lot of pipes and stuff out there. But they would like to, I, I think their long-term plan is to turn that into more of a, more of a office park or an industrial park that would be plotted out and more user-friendly.
Yes, and I think that, that kind of echoes what we've heard from other companies and employers in the township is that they're making investments today and that we know that they want to continue to expand and make investments in the future, which is wonderful. Another example is Star Trucking. This is on the northwest corner of Joy and Hagerty Roads. And this site was dilapidated just last year, really overgrown and uncared for. And today, Star Trucking has come in. They've done a facade renovation to their industrial operations. They've done so much cleanup and landscaping. What you can see here, this tan area, this will be grass eventually. What they tore out was a curb cut, an access drive onto Hagerty Road as part of their plan. So they're drastically improving the safety by reducing one of those curb cuts onto Hagerty Road and so close to the Joy Road intersection. So a wonderful applicant to work with. And then, and then also Burrows. This is an applicant who has recognized that there is a historic kind of iconic building in the township and in the larger Plymouth community. And here, you know, it's difficult to fill this traditional space the way it was once used. So it's really taking a creative approach, a mix of uses to fill the space and to have that adaptive reuse. They are planning on a number of site enhancements. You may have noticed that they've removed some of the, the old chain-link fencing around the property. They have significant plans to upgrade the parking lot and the landscaping and sort of those site amenities. They also have a number of new tenants that are looking for even more space, and this includes Rivian, which is a high-tech automotive autonomous vehicle.
Since Rivian first came in, they, they started with 100,000 square feet, immediately went to 150. They're looking for an extra 50. And for those that don't know who they are, they're the Tesla of trucks. So they're doing personal consumer vehicles. And they do all virtual reality engineering instead of traditional engineering. Right now, they're at 130 employees. They're looking for almost 200 more by the end of next year, and they're, they're growing tremendously.
We have toured the facility, and we're basically under a gag order not to talk about it much more than that, but it is amazing, and I, I can't believe that it's happening right here in, in the township. We anticipate that they will be doing some kind of a formal grand opening, ribbon cutting of some sort before the end of the calendar year. They wanted to do it this summer, but they're growing so fast that they, it just got ahead of them. When it opens and you get a chance to see what's going on in there, you will be blown away, and especially given the, the reuse of this, you know, historic building that was designed for something completely different. It will, it's really going to put us on the map.
What is the ownership of Rivian?
It's a privately-owned company. There's, I believe there's like one major investor, but he may have some other ones. A very dynamic individual. I mean, he's kind of in that Elon Musk sort of style.
Their factory is in Illinois, outside of Chicago.
Oh, this is not manufacturing. It's all R&amp;D.
R&amp;D, yeah.
Yeah. But growing like crazy, so it's about all we can say. When it, when it happens, you'll, you'll be, you'll be blown away. Okay?
So that's just a snapshot of...
And for both, for both of you, what's, what's basically our, our commercial occupancy rate or vacancy rate right now?
Right now, we're over 98% for occupancy for, for businesses in the township.
Yeah. So basically, if you want anything over, I don't know, 30,000 square feet, you got to buy it, you got to build it?
Pretty much, pretty much.
And there is, there's vacant land?
Oh, yeah.
In the eastern, northeastern part of the township? Is that...
It's getting a very, very lot of interest. Certainly, the, the closer to Amazon you are, the interest is even bigger.
Actually, we'll be talking about one of those properties coming up next.
So there's a large chunk east of 275?
275.
That has been dormant for a long time?
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm going to handle the challenges. If you could hit the next slide there. So what are some of our, our significant economic development challenges right now? Unfortunately, a couple of them are right here at 275 and Ann Arbor Road. The Kmart property. We are not immune to the big-box curse that has hit so many communities across America as Amazon and, and online shopping continue to, in, in the minds of many people, render big-box stores like Kmart obsolete. This property is currently owned by Grand Saquah, which is both a commercial and residential developer. I, I did reach out to them again today for an update on this site. They, there's a lot of rumor mill surrounding this property, but their, their proposal, which they, oops, are still, it went off. So their proposal is currently to take the existing Kmart building and demolish the eastern third and the western third of the building and make it a smaller retail operation. And then in the front, in the outlot along Ann Arbor Road, there is a plan to put a series of stores along there. Basically, what they're looking for is operations that would cater to the, to folks going to work in the morning. So if you would imagine Starbucks and donut shops and things like that, that would all have drive-through capabilities. Of course, we want a Chick-fil-A there, and we haven't given up on that. Especially Gary, he is relentless in his pursuit of Chick-fil-A. So the, I also understand today that, that the site behind there is, is, is it for sale now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the, the used car dealer?
Spartan, yeah.
Spartan, so that may also spur, help spur their redevelopment of that site. There was a time, I've, I've recommended it more than once, that that could be a possible residential townhouses in the back. Just get rid of the Kmart building altogether and put residential in the back, and then have like a little promenade of some sort going up the middle and then connecting to the, to the outbuilding shopping along Ann Arbor Road. But, you know, we're always, we have been giving Saquah a lot of different suggestions. There's a lot of different retail opportunities that still exist that are being tried out around the country. Couple of them from Myers in particular. They're looking at sort of this urban, smaller type of Meyer store that would fit in a more urban environment. So that's something, too, that we've been kind of encouraging. So it is, it's, it's a sad site right now to look at, and, but, you know, we are, we are working diligently to try to come up with creative solutions to bring that back to life. Next property that's been a problem is I-275 and Ann Arbor Road. That is the former Steak and Ale site. Bennigan's is still there. It's pretty overgrown right now, so it's not as big a eyesore as it, as it is during the winter months. But there is a lot of, there are disputes over the, the land amongst the family members who control the property, and I guess I just have to leave it at that. But it's still one of the most, I think, attractive parcels anywhere in western Wayne County. And unfortunately, you've just got a lot of family members who can't come to agreement on what to do with it.
Remember, we did have a hotel planned for there.
Yeah, that, that was the site when we were looking for a hotel. We thought we were close to a deal with Marriott, but that fell through in, in part because I think the developer couldn't deliver to Marriott, and then the family, the landowner family got involved again, and they were, again, searching for top dollar, so. Just before you move on, is there any, are there any tools that we have to use to try to encourage the owners to improve the appearance of that? Since it is such a prominent gateway to our community? Well, really, all we have at our disposal are, are ordinance violations that we would apply to the vegetation at the site. We've also continued to inspect the Bennigan's building, and it's, it's still a safe building. There's no significant violations there either. So it's just a matter of getting out there all the time and trying to monitor and flag. We've had trucks parking there, and we, we think we cleaned that up, but certainly a challenging site. Another, yeah, go ahead.
Just to add that, you know, by undertaking the PUD ordinance that the township did and improving or revising that and changing those regulations so that a parcel of that size could be considered a PUD as it was under the hotel. could be considered a PUD as it was under the hotel development, that's a proactive approach to incentivizing development, the right kind of development that you want to see there.
Another facility is the Door Building. That is to the east of the Burrows Building. We've had some really good nibbles, but nobody has really latched on to that yet. Gary, do you have anything? You've been involved in some of those projects.
Because of the proximity to Amazon, we have, it's 260,000 square feet. It's 170,000 square feet of warehouse and 90,000 office. So we either have somebody looking for the office or looking for the back. We had somebody very, very significant, willing to bring 1,000 jobs to the township, and the state of Georgia offered them free land, a free building, and a tax break. So they went to Georgia. So that was unfortunate and a loss of 1,000 jobs, so.
Another site that's on the market now is Plaza Lanes. That is another site that could be redeveloped for either commercial as part of the general drive development park there, but it could also be residential. It could also be a good location for maybe some type of assisted living facility for seniors or others who need it. So we've been, we've been getting a lot of inquiries about that particular site. People are interested in that. Also too, I mean, it's not on the list, but across the street, we have the Elks Lodge, and then behind that is another significant tract of land. I know that a few years ago, there was a plan to put some senior housing in there or maybe assisted living. It fell through, I think, with the recession, but we still get a lot of interest in that, in that area as well.
Plaza Lanes has ceased operating as a bowling alley?
I believe they're still operational. I haven't, I haven't heard about, I don't know.
Haven't seen a car.
I don't go there, but it's, it's hard to tell. I don't know. So the other bane of my existence is the Atlantis Insurance Building. This is not the restaurant. This is what we call the Atlantis Insurance Building on Ann Arbor Road. This is the building that caught fire over a year ago, and it has still not been demolished. There's a lot of legal and construction and utility issues surrounding it, but we are hopeful that that will, that will be coming down soon.
Looks awful.
And Kevin Bennett, I'm telling you, if it doesn't come down soon, you're, I'm going to unleash you on the courts to do something.
Get him to clear a public nuisance and have it taken down.
Awesome.
It looks awful.
Yeah, it's really sad.
And what does, what does soon mean?
Sue him?
Soon.
Soon? Oh.
I think I know what sue him means.
Yeah, you should. I don't know, maybe, it's coming, it's coming close. They've been making a lot of promises to take it down, and I'm running out of patience, so maybe sooner than you think.
It's a great spot.
Yeah, it is a good spot. Okay, next is, what's coming next? We'll have Gary.
Well, just, sorry. Just a couple, unless you're covering, what's going on with Beck Road at Five Mile, all of that stuff, and then Dunkin' Donuts, and maybe there's something else.
Yeah, let's talk about that one. So Laura, you've been working on some new, some new plans for that one. Can you tell us what's going on?
Sure, I'll handle Dunkin' Donuts first. That's quite easy. They do have a plan for expansion. They've been given final site plan from the Planning Commission. They're just working with Wayne County on their permits. And a lot of the projects that we see, the Planning Commission has, you know, said, okay, you've met our criteria, and then they're still in this process finalizing their stormwater management with Wayne County or maybe some access to sites. That's kind of where we see a lot of applicants in the queue right now.
So do you find Wayne County to be cooperative on this, or are they billatory?
Dave Richman, you might be able to speak a little bit more towards your relationship with them. I don't, I don't deal with them directly, but...
More's the pity.
Pardon me?
Go ahead. She's being churlish.
I believe that they, I think they're just understaffed at this point because they are responsive to the new development. It's just...
I'll give you the, she's being very kind. They're extremely slow. There's a lot of development happening in Wayne County. They will tell you that they're understaffed and overworked and underpaid and all that, but...
Do they plan to fix it or just complain?
I'm not the CEO of Wayne County, so I don't know. Talk to Joe Barone and Warren Evans.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Barone, I've found him to be very cooperative, but he doesn't control things there. But obviously, this benefits Wayne County to move out on these, right? So you would think they would make this a priority of their plans, operational plans. So maybe, Mr. Richman, you can give us 60 seconds.
I had gone to a meeting probably two and a half, three years ago now down there at permits. They had a meeting when they had a new economic developer come in or someone that kind of spurring economic growth, and they had a lot of the engineers and contractors come in and meet with them and, and kind of talk to them. And a lot of it was, talk was around their, their stormwater management ordinance, because that is the biggest holdup and the biggest issue that we see. There's quite a significant cost to bring stormwater into compliance, and that's been the big holdup. And the biggest issue they have, as Supervisor Heisey said, is that they're understaffed right now. They're severely understaffed, and there's a lot of projects coming in. And the first thing, when somebody comes in and asks us about engineering, the first thing we say is, go to Wayne County. Before you even come to us, please go to Wayne County, talk to them, what's going to be required, get that process going, because that is our biggest holdup right now, is just working through Wayne County.
Did Wayne County, at one time, there was the requirement a couple of years ago to bring an existing site up to the new standard. Was that work which was creating a huge delay in expense? I don't know all the details, but I bet you know what I'm talking about, right?
Right, it's the stormwater, the stormwater. It's bringing it up into compliance. If the, if the stormwater system was not, was installed prior to 2000, prior to the new ordinance, they are required to bring it into compliance. In most cases, that may mean just, if they're adding on to the site, they may need to add a little bit more stormwater detention. The biggest issue is prior to 2000, we did not have stormwater quality. So that's the biggest thing, is they're having to bring in and put stormwater quality onto their storm system. And then that involves, in most cases, bringing in a mechanical device, what they call a swirl chamber that you run the water through, and it helps to take out the grit and grime. And so they have to bring that into compliance. If they come in to pave a parking lot, repave a parking lot, they are required to bring their site into compliance with the stormwater.
So it's a disincentive to repave your parking lot?
That was one of the biggest arguments that we had at that meeting that day. There's several, several sites that were brought up that's not necessarily in Plymouth Township where the parking lot is completely destroyed, but the owners aren't going to touch it because it costs too much money to bring the stormwater into compliance. And that's not just necessarily Wayne County. That's being brought down by the state, which is brought down by the EPA. It's a cascading effect. They're just following the guidelines that they have to follow, you know, that they're, they're under. That's, that's what it all comes down to.
Okay. Let's move on to the presentation here. So what's coming next? We'll have Gary Heitman talk about this. I want to jump in before Gary starts, and again, thank you for your, really essentially volunteer work on behalf of the township in the world of economic development. Your experience at Ford and in the private sector has been of tremendous help to us to build relationships, create new relationships. You've, you really know how that, how that game is played, and we're, we're very grateful to have you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Retention visits. Since I started doing this, I've been on 23 retention visits. Most of them were with Wayne County and the state of Michigan. Some were by myself. One of the, one of the key things that's up there is, why is retention important? A survey shows 75% of the jobs come from local companies, right? So everybody I talked to, to a company, has said, once we moved in, we've never ever heard from the township before after, after that. So they all love somebody coming and just saying, can I help you do anything? A lot of people are expanding. A lot of people want to expand. And why is expanding important? Well, you look at one new job, if I create one new job in Plymouth Township, say it's a construction job, that's 3.27 new jobs that come from that construction job. One I like is the finance one that's in the metro area. For every one new, one new job, I'm creating two new finance jobs, okay? Wow, this is, this is an amazing number. So, all right, so I need retail, I need people to feed them, I need gas stations, I need everything else to go with it. And these are the kinds of things that retention visits say, hey, you're really welcome here. We love having you in our town. Places like Master Automatic that have been here a long time, gee, we'd like to expand. They're up on Schoolcraft and Hagerty. We'd like to expand. We want to hire 50 new people, and we'd love to do it in the township. Can you help us find space? Well, one of the key pieces is the partnerships that we've built, certainly with the Plymouth, Plymouth Chamber of Commerce, the city, Northville, Wayne County, Michigan Land Bank. Warren Evans basically has assigned somebody to work with us from, from Wayne County Economic Development. He attends every meeting. They're doing resource groups with us now. Mike Duggan's staff, because they do own, remember, a big piece of land on Five Mile in the township. Mike Duggan has his staff now talking to us about, hey, what do you think about doing this? And what do you think about, you know, do you want residential on Five Mile? Probably not. And we'd talk about it and just said, kitty corner to the dump, and it's the farthest away from any police and fire. It doesn't make good sense. These are the kinds of partnerships that we love to build, and we are building them. And, you know, the greatest example of the partnerships then come into MITC.
I think you skipped a slide? No, you didn't. So the MITC, obviously, this is the Five Mile project. We've had a lot of discussion about this in the past. We are going to have a lot more in the months ahead. September 11th, just mark your calendar, it's a normal meeting night for us, and we will have the folks here from the Michigan Land Bank talking about their plans and recommendations for a brownfield authority for the MITC corridor. So MITC stands for Michigan International Technology Center, for those unfamiliar with that. Laura, if you could just start from the, from the, nope, if you could go back to the, nope, that. If you have a pointer or just use the hand there. So let's just go from, from east to west. That, that is the old Robert Scott prison site in Northville that is being redeveloped right now. I, what was the last estimate on homes and apartments, like 200?
200.
200 in terms of both townhouses, and they're, they're looking for permission to put apartments in there as well. It's a lot of, pretty, pretty dense residential area in there, along with a hotel that they have secured, and also some shopping, shopping opportunities as well. But there will be a hotel going in there and a lot of residential.
Yep.
Then, and then also to answer some of Jack's question about Beck Road, and we kind of skipped over that. Beck Road and Five is still under active consideration right now for development. They're looking at Five Mile and Beck. They had a plan for a more elaborate, I'm going to call it a strip mall, but they are now looking at a Taco Bell and then a, maybe like a Tim Hortons and a Starbucks or something. Laura, is that accurate?
Yeah, so the applicant came before the Planning Commission and presented a two-building commercial plaza with a big outdoor seating area similar to, larger than what's outside at Los tres amigos on Ann Arbor Road. And then in dealing with Wayne County, there were some access changes, and they've since revised their site plan significantly and are preparing to submit again to the Planning Commission in August for a revised final site plan consideration in which one of their commercial buildings is now eliminated and is a freestanding Taco Bell.
Is this a Taco Bell similar to the one that's in Plymouth City? That's that new gray facade?
So we'll have two Taco Bells in the township and three in the Plymouth community.
They're very, very hot, and I'll tell you that the, the, they're hot.
Never mind, I won't touch that one.
Yeah, but I know as an example, there is down the street to the east of Beck in that strip mall on our side, there is a Jimmy John's. And apparently, that is, I think that is the number one Jimmy John's in the top five in the state or the...
Yep, top five in the state.
In the state.
That Jimmy John's.
Is that Jimmy John's. Even though they don't deliver to my house, they, they do deliver to everybody in Northville and more importantly, a lot for all the businesses in the Five Mile corridor on both sides. It's just, it's huge.
So is this the corner at Five Mile and Beck?
Yeah, where the Max and Irma's is.
What about the...
Further down?
Right.
Yeah. Further down, there are still plans for a hotel, which we approved last year about this time. They, they continue to submit revised plans for that. They're in discussions with Home Depot for access from the north, which is required by the fire department. And then the Max, I'm sorry, the Ruby Tuesdays, there is a plan to put in a significant, well-known pizza establishment. That's all I can say.
A local Detroit.
A what?
A local Detroit pizza establishment.
Local Detroit.
Not your friend, but...
Metro Detroit pizza establishment. Okay.
So Ruby Tuesdays is still operating?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that, you know, that, that format is just not what it used to be. And, you know, they're, all of those types of restaurants are suffering nowadays. So if you just move to the, from, from that area, then you have the DeHoco site. The big black blob there in the middle is the, is the prison property itself. There is wooded area to the, to the right of that, which is, we believe is not contaminated. And then to the left is wetland area. And then that site right there that Laura's focused on is, we just got approval by the Plymouth Township Brownfield Authority today to allow a brownfield site to go in there for Veritas or Veritas. They are a significant, they're looking at a 50,000 square foot building. They build, install, and maintain fiber optic wire. And they employ, I think at their peak, I think they're looking to employ at least 300 people. And what I like too is about it, they are part of the Michigan Veterans Hiring Program, so they do go out of their way to hire and retain veterans.
Are they taking down the two silos? They're going to incorporate them somehow in the building?
The silos are unsafe and will be removed. To the left is our site that we just recently sold to Hillside or Hill, yeah, Hillside. I keep calling them Hilltop. I don't know why. So they are still doing their due diligence on that site. The good news there is they, I believe that they will be able to tie in their sewer line to the Veritas site once that goes online. So that will be a benefit to further development on both sides. Then we have the Creek, as you know, and then to the left of that is the Detroit property. We've had some unusual requests for residential in there, which I have said, no, it's, number one, it's not zoned properly. Number two, it would be very isolated from the rest of the township from a public safety and maintenance standpoint, and it's kitty corner from a huge, ever-growing, smelly landfill. So I don't know who would want to live there. So across the street, that's all Northville, and they are working on, similarly, to develop that site. Most of those areas north of Five are brownfield because of arsenic and lead, because that was the old shooting range area for police agencies. Jerry, you should, were you, you, you remember those days? So that's the old shooting range, and there's a lot of other junk buried out there too. So most of this area, other than our site and the Detroit site, is all brownfield. But we can link them up together, much like, we can connect them all. That, we'll explain that more in September. Then to the south, we have the, that blue, dark blue is the Audient property. So, you know, we do consider that part of the MITC, even though they're sort of a silent partner right now. We're hoping that they will get more involved in the future. So on the Northville side, they have at least one Chinese company that's coming in. They've given their site plan and final approval to that, and I believe that there's another company probably from Asia. And I believe that there's another company, probably from Asia, coming in and looking at that as well. We are, we're just a terrific hub of international companies. China, Japan, Korea, and then France, Germany, Italy with Brembo. So we've got a lot of tremendous international presence, which we really are trying to exploit with the MITC. Because what we like to say is, look, your neighbors are here, too. It's a nice community to live, to work. We're really close to Ann Arbor and the University of Michigan, and we're only minutes away from the airport and Detroit. So there's a convenient map that spells that out. And this is something that the MITC uses in their promotional materials, so it shows our proximity. And also along the right, it's kind of hard to see from here, but it shows a lot of the businesses that are already well-established in the whole Five Mile corridor from Beck East to Sheldon.
And I apologize, I think this slide got out of line, but...
That's okay. It works out good.
So this is good, this is more Gary Heitman stuff here.
Well, it goes back to what Kurt says, is we're talking to people all over the world about moving here. We have some significant challenges. Obviously, we have some major Chinese companies. One of them, CNU Bearing, is up there. CNU is Cooperation and Unity. It's the largest bearing company in China and the eighth largest in the world. And of course, they're having tariff issues right now. And tariff issues right now could stall their plans on hiring new people. So it just adds to our challenge. Signet, they're over off General Drive next to Absolpure. They clean the containers that go on the backs of trucks and that go on the backs of railroad cars. They do over 200,000 containers a year. They do a lot of hiring returning citizens. They have matching 401K. They have a very, very, they have actually an HR person assigned to work with each person that they hire to make sure that they have financial, good financial advice. They were 40 years in business in Fenton, and they came to us, redid the building. They've had some problems that the police and the fire have had to take care of with them. But they are a tremendous add to our, to our community.
What is a returning citizen? An ex-convict?
Yes. Formerly.
Formerly incarcerated individuals.
Yep. And one company we don't show up there that's one of my favorites is Trumpf with an F on the end of it. They do 3D printing. And right now, their key piece is they're doing 3D teeth. And I was watching them make 3D teeth. And it's amazing to see how quickly you can turn around and put teeth in people's heads with a 3D printer. It was one of my favorites.
What about, let's talk about Lock Performance, too.
Lock, we've met with them. They just put their 60,000-square-foot addition on. Tremendous, brand-new contracts.
They got a half a billion-dollar contract from the Department of Defense last year. What Lock Performance does, they're on Hagerty Road, just north of the real courthouse, across from Burrows. And it's a very quiet-looking place, but there's a lot of action inside. That's another place that if you ever get the chance to tour it, you should. They refurbish, repair, and modify tanks, armored personnel carriers, and other armored vehicles for the U.S. military. And it's a very busy place. So they just put on a new add-on, and they bought a new, they bought an old factory in Lansing, where they're going to expand and create 800 new jobs in Lansing. But they're also going to create 200 more jobs here in Plymouth Township for the, for their existing facility. I don't know if they're going to expand anymore. They could if they wanted to. They still control property to the south between them and the courthouse, but not sure yet if they want to expand.
In that area, Globe Tech, which is on Plymouth Road at 275, is there anything you can tell us about that?
I'm not going to talk to them at all.
I have talked with them at several occasions, and they would like to expand off the north of their property. I believe it was 15,000 square feet they were looking at adding, which would allow them to have another bay for their operations. And that would allow them to increase their operations significantly and to do some adjustments to the parking lot and some landscaping as well. Where we left it is that they are working with their own civil and contractor to develop some plans and that they would like to submit when they're ready.
Aren't they a defense contractor, too?
I don't, I'm not sure.
I think they may have some aerospace component.
Aerospace? They're the ones with the water tower on 275?
Yeah.
Who's formerly an auto parts manufacturing, Associated Spring.
Okay. You got more, Gary?
Nope, fine. Jire was on there.
Jire, yeah.
Major CNC. They have 80% of the market share in China, and they're in 60-plus companies, countries. They're looking to buy a new building in the township. As Kurt said, if you're looking for 30,000 square foot or more, basically, you're going to have to build. And a lot of these people don't want to build. So right now, the Mobus...
Why don't they want to build? I thought they're committed to America.
Well, they're going to build someplace, you know, or they can buy something that's already put together someplace else.
A good example is GAC from China. We thought we had these guys, they wanted to lease a couple of properties off of Beck. And we thought they were a lock. And then we found out a couple of months later that they were going to Farmington Hills because they had been given the authorization from the head office in China to spend more money and acquire bigger properties.
It went from 30,000 to 50,000.
To 50,000, and they didn't want to build. So we were, we lost out because we didn't have the space available that they were looking for. I mean, it's kind of a good problem to have, but it's still, it's still a problem. You know, that's why we're focused so much on Five Mile right now.
Well, and Mobus is getting a lot of interest right now across from Kmart on Hagerty because of almost 200,000 square foot just of warehouse space. And obviously, Amazon, you know, we may have lost it coming to the township, but we're going to be the beneficiary as a lot of companies try to get in close to them and try to be as near to them as they possibly can. It'll help us a lot, too, so.
What is the new facility being built on Eccles Road on the La Bonia side?
That's the Amazon facility.
And what's the one back, what's the one farther east, Amazon also?
Yeah, they have a distribution center, and then they have a Midwest office facility. It wasn't just a corporate, but it's their Midwest. A lot of, a lot of R&amp;D and whatever else that Amazon branches into everything. So now they're talking about hot food, cold food. There's all kinds of stuff going on and, you know, I won't, we'll be seeing them doing some deliveries in the future, too, I think, so.
With drones.
With drones, yeah.
Okay, next slide. So you want me to do this one?
Yeah.
So what's coming next? I'll tell you, I'll tell you, a typical day, a typical day for, or week for us at Township Hall is we're getting, I think in a normal week, we could probably get about two or three different inquiries from developers looking at opportunities in the township. And so in our industrial areas, as you might expect, it's the Chinese guys and it's others who are looking to expand or acquire existing property, hopefully build. But we're also getting a lot of inquiries for residential. As you know, we are pretty much built out now in terms of large-scale residential developments. But we are getting a lot of these smaller requests, like we've seen tonight. The Woods, looking at some of these smaller parcels for cluster housing or PUD developments that would be appropriate for empty nesters. I like the photo there, that's good. So there's, that's kind of the new market. It's us, right? It's the empty nester, for me, the soon-to-be empty nester, who is looking to downsize, but they don't want to leave the Plymouth community. They may be folks who are currently living in the city, and they've, they want to sell their home there and trade it out for a single-story, single-floor residence with an upstairs that maybe they don't have to access every day. But they want everything on the ground floor, and they want the amenities. They also want, they don't want to have to worry about the landscaping and the mowing of the lawn and the snow plowing and all of those things. So we are getting a lot of inquiries from developers looking at homes like that. And we're also looking at assisted living and Alzheimer's care and hospice care and some other things that are geared for seniors, preferably where they can transition from a, an independent living to an assisted living facility, all on the same grounds, and they don't have to go too far for that. At the same time, we're also trying to attract millennials. And we've seen this with the Courthouse Grill property. Certainly in the city, we've seen that with the development of the Starkweather Lofts and some of the other developments going on in the city right now. So it is, it's kind of, we've got kind of both ends of the bookshelf right now. We've got developers that are looking to attract seniors and empty nesters, but we're also looking at getting millennials and young folks who also don't want to worry about the upkeep of a home. They want the flexibility of an apartment or a condo. They work all day, and they just want to come home at night and not have to worry about stuff. They also want to be close, frankly, to downtown Plymouth because it's cool, it's hip. They want to walk there, they want to bike there. And we also, I think, get a great benefit from Heinz Park and the fact that people want to walk, jog, and bike their way around the Wayne County park system. So those are two things that make Plymouth Township very attractive to attract and hopefully retain some of these millennial-type residents.
So we have a unique situation here tonight because we have a millennial sitting up here at this rostrum. I was not referring to the treasurer, despite his raising his hand there. So not to take up too much more time, but I wondered, you mentioned you've been looking. Based on your experience in other communities, is there something that this township should be looking at? I know from the ZBA experience, a lot of those variances are from younger families and couples moving in who have an issue with a fence or something. And that's typically in the area that's what, south of Ann Arbor Road, east of Sheldon, that neighborhood? So any comments that you might have on the score tonight?
I would say that we would love to find a home in Plymouth Township and have looked at several and made an offer on one so far. I think it's been difficult finding something that is in a walkable neighborhood. That's something that's important to us, just being active and taking our dog for a walk. And some of the neighborhoods aren't as well-connected. So immediately when that type of property comes online, that's an immediate no to us. If there are, if it is in a neighborhood with sidewalks, then, you know, we can be connected to Heinz Park. We can be connected to Ann Arbor Road. We can be connected to downtown Plymouth and just neighborhood streets to run and walk on. That makes a huge difference. So for us, really, it's, the search has been centered around the properties around Sheldon Road, west of Sheldon, in the Trailwood neighborhoods that are still walkable to other areas, walkable even to Kroger. That's something that we're looking for.
Now, the city of Plymouth does not have the monopoly on Cool. We are, we also have Phoenix Mill. And next, at our next meeting, August 14th, we'll have a presentation by the, some representatives of Wayne County who own this facility and the grounds on it, along with, I think, at least one or two of the developers. And Laura will be here as well to talk about the really amazing redevelopment plan that is scheduled for Phoenix Mill. This is one of the original Henry Ford, Albert Kahn-designed facilities for Henry Ford that connected, that was one of the, a series of mills that was built along Heinz, Heinz Drive and the Rouge River by Henry Ford, where he would, each mill pretty much had its own theme and its own focus. So this is a facility that's been dormant for, ah, man, as long as I've been around, it seems. And it's, we have some really exciting plans in store for this. So I know Laura is, I don't know if you want to share, if you want to give any previews tonight, but it's going to be great.
Just that I'm very excited about this project. It's going to be a true destination and such an improvement and enhancement to that area. Just not for Heinz, but the whole neighborhood there with Five Mile. And I think the presentation that the development team is going to give on the 14th will be excellent. If there's anything in particular that the board is interested in learning about the project specifically, feel free to shoot me an email, or, you know, we can talk about it after. Because the development team has asked for suggestions on what this board would like to know specifically. They want to make sure that you have the answers that you need when they come to present.
So think about the Ford facility in downtown Northville.
The Water Wheel Building?
The Water, yeah, and where McKenna's office is. I toured that facility with the owner with the idea that he was very interested in doing something with Phoenix Mill. And it's worked out very, very well. The best part about this is Wayne County came to us and said, what do you guys want to see in this? You know, before we trash it, I mean, do you want a McDonald's there? They actually had interest from fast food, you know, and that was absolutely not. We're not going down that path. You know, give us something that really benefits the township.
And Jack Dempsey was involved in those early discussions as well, as our resident historian. And we wanted to make sure that we certainly preserve the building as much as possible and also that any additions to the building are in harmony with the original design. Okay. What's coming next? Well, you know, it's just about making, it's about partnerships. It's about working with our neighbors. That includes the city of Plymouth, Wayne County, state of Michigan. We continue to extend our hand of friendship to those who are also involved in economic development. We attend the Wayne County Business Round Tables now that they have put on, where we have 400, 500 people show up, where they are given advice and training by Wayne County on all of the different types of economic development assistance that's available out there from all units of government. It's also about, you know, our retention visits and just making sure that we try to stay in touch with the businesses that are already here. And then here at home, here at Township Hall, just streamlining our township processes. I think Sheri's all, Sheri's still here, but, you know, you guys in the building department have made phenomenal progress in the last year in finally getting us, you know, digital and getting us on computers so that we can streamline our process. It makes it a lot easier for our staff, but also it makes it so much easier for developers where we're eliminating unnecessary paperwork and duplicative work. And we've really, hopefully, made the process a lot easier and smoother for people who are looking to do business here. And it's just about having a business-friendly attitude. I mean, we are open for business. We want economic growth and development. It is great for our bottom line from a tax-based perspective, but it's also very good for job creation, which we should all be working towards as a state. And we also want to make sure that the people who are coming here, who work here, are going to live here and at least certainly stay in the Plymouth community, preferably in the township. And part of that, too, some of the businesses, some of the people that we partner with include Plymouth Canton Community Schools. People come here for the school district. That's why I, that was my major reason for coming here. That's why a lot of thousands of families come to Plymouth because of the school district. They also benefit from Schoolcraft College, from the University of Michigan, Wayne State, even MSU. But I don't know in what way, but that's just my own bias. But it's really, it's about making partnerships and working with our neighbors as much as possible. Q&amp;A session, and again, this is something that we want to use in the future for presentation. um, presentations. I know one, another building that we get a lot of questions on is the old Comerica Building, the one that's closed right now, um, at Sheldon and, and Ann Arbor Road. Um, and Laura, just real quick, what's the game plan for that site?
We have had interest on the site over the past year, and just recently we had some very preliminary discussions with, um, Premier Dental for an expansion there, maybe a U of M affiliation, um, very top-notch, um, energy-efficient building, so that would be wonderful to see that, um, expanded.
They have a terrible parking lot, so they're going to have a stormwater problem.
Yeah.
They, they are aware.
But they also want to make that a, some kind of green building showplace, right? Is that what they told you?
Yep, solar, energy-efficient, geothermal.
So is Monroe State Bank moving from the city of Plymouth? Or they're going to retain the branch on Main Street?
I believe they're moving. And this will be a larger facility for them with more offices, conference space.
The other thing, Kurt mentioned, uh, Wayne County Economic Development Roundtable. The next one is October 25th. It is at, uh, Wayne County Community College in Taylor. 400 and some-plus people were at the last one. Kind of ties businesses with resources. It's also good to just walk around, network, if you guys are around. Uh, it was seven to nine the last couple of times, but, uh, this one they moved back, um, to eight to 10, I think, so, uh, we'll get more information as that one gets closer.
Yeah, and we also want to mention too, the Plymouth Chamber, we work very closely with them, we attend their more, board meeting every month, and, um, I, I think between the three of us, we're in touch with Wes Graff and his, his team there, uh, probably at least once a week.
Absolutely.
So, any other questions from the board or from the public? I see, uh, yeah.
Any, any interest in... Laura might remember this, but at one point, remember the Elks? Was, they were talking about developing that?
Yeah.
Any interest there? I know that there's problems.
We, at the Elks Lodge? I, I did mention that, yeah, there's...
At Hillside? No, Elks, the Elks on Ann Arbor Road?
Yeah.
You know, they wanted to sell it? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I did mention that. Um, it is still a site that's being looked at by, by a variety of, uh, operations. You know, it, it's a site that was, I know that was, uh, scheduled for development before the recession. Uh, it, it's, it's very limited in what you can do there. Number one, it's, it's a brownfield site, there was a, a metal, uh, fabricating or, uh, factory of some sort there for many years, it no longer exists. Obviously, the ground is, is no doubt contaminated, and also the proximity of the railroad tracks are, are very disadvantageous to residential. There are things that you could put in there though, I mean, you could put in, you know, some assisted living, you could put in hospice care, there's, you could put in a self-storage unit, there's a lot of other...
People can't hear any of them, right?
Well, you know, it's no easy way to say it, but those, those are some of the things that have been, where we have been approached by developers who are interested in that, in that site.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else on the board or the public? Any other questions, comments, suggestions?
Comment, just to commend trustee Heitman for, uh, going above and beyond.
Thanks.
Yay!
Been fun.
Okay. All righty, uh, let's move on to, uh, yeah, where are we here? Supervisor and trustee comments. Uh, next, our next meeting will not be until, uh, August 14th, so we got a couple weeks off so that Jerry and his group can focus on the primary. Um, and also Thursday night, we are having our golf course consultant, Paul Albanese, will be doing a public information session and, uh, design charrette over at Hilltop, uh, at, um, at, uh, McLumfa Park, at Township Park, at the Four Seasons Pavilion. Okay, so it's at the Four Seasons Pavilion, 7 o'clock, Thursday night, not here, so make sure that you go there. I think that's all I have. Bob? Oh, sorry, um, Gary?
It is kind of nice having somebody else young down there besides just me, but I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, Jerry? Any election-related stuff?
Yeah, just a, just a little bit of election, uh, information. Uh, we have sent out about 36, 3,620 or so, uh, absentee ballots. Uh, we've received about 45% of them back already, and, uh, as a, as a rule, we usually get 90-plus percent back, so, uh, that's going well. And our training, uh, was successful in, in, uh, training over 100 people to, uh, to work the elections, and, uh, we're all kind of excited and nervous about, uh, getting the new equipment, you know, used and get it broken in and, and hopefully assist all of our, uh, residents in, uh, in exercising their franchise.
It's not delivered yet?
No, it's delivered, it's just that, you know, using it and, and, uh, training and then using it in practice is sometimes two different things, but we're excited about it.
Mark?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Chuck?
Uh, Mark, the spreadsheet you referred to on the millage, did I miss it or if, would you just send it to me again or the rest of the board that we discussed, which built those histograms?
Yeah, I can do that.
On the spending? If it's too big, if you have to do a hard copy, I'll pick up a hard copy. You've seen it?
Yeah, you can get it.
Okay, all set. Any questions or comments from the public at this time? Awesome. All right, um, need a motion to adjourn? Yes, sir.
I move adjourn.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman, seconded by trustee Dempsey. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.